Thank you. In deference to the people who are here for a common vitulers permit, we'll move the agenda to begin with item five under new business. Section B, common vitulers permit for the Barry Patch. We need a vote of approval. We have representatives from the Barry Patch here this evening and a copy of their menu if you are so inclined to be interested.
I brought four.
Yeah, and so forth. I know that Jessica has provided them with information about the liquor license which will be coming. What do you expect for a timeframe for that, Jessica? I know it's mostly not us, it's the state.
Right, so we're, we have to work with the folks on making sure that the liquor license application is complete and correct. And then we have to do two weeks posting before it can come to the board. Once the board approves it, then it gets sent to the state and the state can usually, usually maybe like a six week, six to eight week turnaround. So I would say like maybe sep- hopefully early September we can.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow. Wow, and you can buy a gun at eighteen? Over the counter, whatever, okay. Oh, that would be good.
And also like the fact that like last time we applied for it took about two and a half, three months.
Yeah.
But that was also submitted in November, so when everybody puts their bills in, it's right around November, December.
Yeah.
Uh, what could?
I don't work for the government for twenty years though.
We, we need a motion?
Do we need to go live?
Uh, we can't.
My computer is not working this today, so.
Oh, right then. Yep, so I would move to approve the, what's it called?
Common virtual uh license requested by the Barry Patch?
Yep.
Make, uh, I would second that motion. Further discussion? Questions? Seeing none? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, it looks like a vote and the permit is approved.
Thank you very much.
Uh, I, do I have something that I sign tonight?
It's. Yes, it's in this folder.
I got one here too. It's, it's a fancy one, okay.
Actually, the whole board has to sign it.
Okay, well, two out of three or the whole board?
I can be out of three tomorrow with all the signatures on it.
And I can come, or I can come by and get it up.
We keep a copy of this with the signatures in file anyway, so we'll need to make a copy.
Yeah, it's, I mean, a little row far distance away. I live out there.
Yeah, yeah. Um, John, and just let you know the cam- these cameras are broadcasting it online, so it is being broadcast.
Oh, perfect, okay. Do you need a pen? Tuesdays throw me off a little bit.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, it's passed, it's approved. I've signed it, we'll wait for John to sign that and would, would you forward it to him, they'll pick it up at a later date?
Yep.
Cause wait for Greg potentially to sign it as well. Okay, thank you so much. Nice to meet you.
Thank you very much. My name is Jeremy.
Okay, Jeremy, I expect to see, expect to see you on one of these luncheons or whatever.
Well, if you forget my name, call me Tiny.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that takes care of that. Moving on to public comments, it doesn't seem like there's anyone here in the public. Approval of the meeting minutes, they are in your packet. The May sixteenth, June sixth, June sixth executive session not for release. And June fourteenth, the annual town meeting. Do we approve the annual town meeting?
Yes, so essentially the annual town meeting minutes just say that the board was present at the annual town meeting. It's not the official record that the town clerk does.
Okay, just checking. Okay, so do I have a, a motion on May sixteenth?
Yep, I'll move to. I'll move to approve the minutes for May sixteenth, the Barry Select Board.
I would second that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the minutes from June sixth.
I have moved to approve the minutes from June sixth.
I will second that. Further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, looks like those have approved as well. We have then the June sixth executive session, we would approve, but not for release.
I would move to approve the June sixth executive session minutes, uh, what, not for release.
I second that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The only issue is that Greg and Maureen are the only ones who can approve the annual town meeting minutes.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yep.
So we'll just, we'll just hold that, that'll be pending um when John, I mean Greg either appears this evening or, or at, or at next meeting. There's no time sensitive issue on that at all, so you don't have to worry about that. Okay, moving on to next items. We've done common vitulers, we've done our minutes, moving on to town report, or reports. Uh, I guess it's up to you, Jessica, to move us through that.
Thank you. The only thing that's not listed on the sheet that I'd like to bring to everybody's attention is that COVID nineteen tests were delivered to our Board of Health on Thursday. And we received those from the state. There's about a thousand tests available for our residents and.
Are those free of charge or?
Yep, free of charge. It was free from the state, so we are gonna be distributing them amongst some different locations in town. So the library, senior center, potentially the police department or the fire department. Um, so we're, we will have them available for any resident who is interested, as well as any staff who may need to test for any reason. So if anybody has any questions or would like to gain access to those tests, you can call the Board of Health or send them an email. So, but I think it comes, each, each kit comes with two tests.
Okay.
We have a lot of them.
Okay, so go ahead with the rest of your report.
Yes. The treasure collector position, uh, at this point, I haven't received enough candidates that are worth, um, you know, interviewing for consideration for this position. So I am exploring the possibility of sharing the position with another community, as it may be our best opportunity to hire someone who has experience and to ensure some longevity. Unfortunately, small towns like ours are just not competitive on our own to attract someone long term, especially in this market. We've had a lot of turnover in that department over the course of probably a decade. And that's a really, really big issue considering that all of the town's money flows through that office. So it's really important that we consider maybe an alternative approach that will ensure us some longevity. Um, the sewer department, we got an update on the USDA loan. And the best financing that they could offer for the town is listed below. So that includes a five point six five million dollar loan and an eight hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant, which equates to twelve point six seven percent. Um, s- and we also found out that the grant is proportional to the loan. So if the sewer department reduces the scope of the project, the grant will decrease proportionately as well. Um, so I.
We'll still get twelve percent, but it'll be the lesser total, right?
Right, so if the project is a three million dollar project, then it's, you know, whatever twelve mil- twelve percent of, uh, three million is. Um, so I know, um, I believe the sewer commission was supposed to have a meeting on Thursday, but I haven't heard any, um, feedback about how that went.
As I said, I don't think they did because nothing is posted.
Okay.
I, no, I could be wrong.
I, I, I had seen the meeting posted for last Thursday, but I haven't heard any feedback on.
Well, I, I think it was posted to be one of those meetings that ended up saying, well, we couldn't do it because they couldn't get a quorum.
Okay.
And so I believe the new meeting date is the twenty eighth of June. Is that?
Oh, actually, it shows.
For DPW or for sewer?
It shows that there's a sewer meeting tonight at seven.
July?
To- July, oh, no, that says July twenty first.
Yeah.
Never mind, June, June, yeah.
Okay, so I, I don't know, I've answered every time. I can be there, I can be there, but I'm, okay, it doesn't matter because they don't have a quorum, so.
Right.
Anyway, I think, I think it's the twenty eighth and I did respond today to say, I'll be there.
Yeah, I believe that was for DPW, not for sewer specifically though.
That's the DPW, so all three commissions.
Yeah.
Which I think it should be, I'm at conversation between at least the select board and the sewer commission.
Yeah, yeah, so that's been tentatively rescheduled for next Tuesday.
That's what I thought, yes, twenty eighth. Okay, well, we'll wait for that and hope that it really happens.
Right, so we do need to have a decision though before June thirtieth because we have a two percent interest rate locked in until June thirtieth. And after that, it could go up a quarter, at least a quarter of a percent, it's projected to go up, so. Um, and when you're talking about many millions of dollars, a quarter of a percent matters. Um, the two fiftieth committee, I will be meeting with them hopefully this week, planning on Thursday morning to discuss their plans for events and to create a path forward for the town's funding contribution. I know that there's been a lot of conversation about what the town may be able to afford to help the two fiftieth committee. Um, so it's, at this point, it's about nailing down how much money they need for all of their goals. And also a timeline on, you know, when they might need to book certain vendors and events. Um, so just overall better understanding what their plans for events are for the two fiftieth anniversary. And creating kind of a discussion around how the town will be able to fund a proportion of that cost. And lastly, under the grants category, the police chief and I have applied for two separate grants to believe, to build the police, fire and EMS, a shared workout space at the Public Safety Building. Um, I know that ever since I've gotten here, there's been an interest, especially with when COVID shut down all of the fitness, um, spaces. There's been an interest to allow our staff to have a space to work out. So it started out, we had kind of an MOU with the staff that they could bring their own equipment. The town wasn't gonna be liable for any equipment, um, if it was broken or lost. And now we're moving into this, we're trying to transition to actually provide a, a space for the staff members to work on their physical, mental health. And, um, so I've applied for a grant and the police chief have both applied for the grant. And we are very hopeful that we will at least get half of it.
Do you have, do you have su- sufficient space for it, do you think?
So with the, um, grant that the town got to organize all the filing.
Oh, the digital stuff, yeah.
We're able to, we're able to, um, get rid of a lot of the files that are stored currently in our salary port.
Excellent. Okay, okay.
So all of the filing cabinets and that space will be removed.
Because I know when we started to put one together for the st- the school, it's not only very expensive, but it took us, you saw, I mean, you've probably been there. It's a huge space.
Yeah.
Our, our space.
I was, we probably.
Well, well, it's too bad because I mean, you know, you really need to have, I, I hope you're getting at least fifty, fifty, sixty grand.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't know about that.
In a grand. No, okay then, okay then.
I mean, I think we could maybe expect like two or three people at a time using this space.
Yeah, well, which is different than the school when you're getting.
You have a whole team.
Thirty people in there, yeah.
Right, so, so we're looking at, you know, something that's sufficient for, for them to work on some, um, you know, physical, mental health goals. And it could be a lot of fun to create some fitness challenges for these folks and, um, you know, give them that, that type of space.
Just don't, just don't put the selectmen in that we're racing, or you know, with pushups or something.
Um, so, yeah, that's some of the things that we got going on, other than our town meeting was last week and, um, how was it?
A good time was had by all.
That was a great time.
Okay, um, so any other questions or anything for Jessica onto her report? Okay, moving on, a select board report, I do have one item. Um, and that is a written, uh, in, uh, thing from the school district, which is talking about the fact that, um, they would like to continue utilizing space at the, at the, or adding space at the Ruggles Lane School where they would be at, producing some special education programming that is really at this point run by the CAPS Collaborative, which is located in Westminster. This would enable Barry students to have access to that program in, at home. It would mean that kids from Hubbardston would, okay, Hubbardston has now a multiple handicap program for early childhood. We would be having more, uh, I guess the, um, how is, it said would be elementary aged children, probably grades three to five. So it would be just an expansion of the programs that we have, I guess, from the CAPS Collaborative in the, um, probably regional school district. Technically, because the town owns the building, it's our asset, that in the lease agreement that is, exists between the, um, school district and the town, the lessee, the school district, may not sublet the premises or any portion thereof, or assign this lease or any portion of that without a written consent of us, of the lesser. So, um, that's why the request is made of us. Hubbardston, as I said, houses, um, programs already from CAPS Collaborative and the high, middle high school does as well. This will add, um, comes, three classrooms will be dedicated for special education space for substantially separate programming for elementary students. Uh, so I, we would need a motion to authorize the, um, use of the Ruggles Lane School classrooms for special education programming in the next c- uh, school year, which would be twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, and we'd need a motion for that.
Uh, so I'll make that motion?
Uh, that we have a motion, I would second that motion.
Uh, we discussed it a little bit.
Oh, absolutely.
Um, so is, so this is space that's not currently being used for?
Correct.
It's an expansion of what they're currently doing?
Yes, yes.
Is there any of the CAPS program going on there?
Not at this time. Um, the CAPS programs for the very early childhood is, and Hubbardston, this would be some space that would be utilized in Barry. Uh, right now, we, the space that, where we were sending our students now is in Mahar, up at, in Orange. So now we would not send, uh, any of our students that need to be, you know, have this program, they would have this program in district. Which saves a, say, I keep saying us, saves the district, um, you know, transportation costs.
And then these are, are, so these classrooms would be dedicated to it, so they're not needed for other classes during the day?
But not according to the superintendent in this, in this writing. Uh, the superintendent did indicate to me that while she is in New Braintree tonight at the town meeting,
That's true.
That if the, you know, if you wanted to ask her more specific questions, I could text her and just say, on your way back, stop at the selectmen's meeting. And she said if that were be necessary, she'd be happy to do that.
Okay, um, yeah, so I just, uh, if, I don't know if you know any more background on CAPS, what exactly it is, how it's.
Uh, well, well, CAPS Collaborative is, um, is an association within the state where a group of school districts meet together in what they call a collaborative, which is a, a thing that the, the state, uh, kind of sanctions. And they then open up ed- special education programs for the, for the districts that are part of that collaborative. Uh, Quabon Regional School District has been a founding member of the CAPS Collaborative. Uh, that includes Ashburnham, Westminster, Narragansett, Gardner, um, uh, Wachusett, uh, Clinton. I'm trying to think who else is in that collaborative. So those districts get together and they create programs. And if you're lucky and you have room and you can put one of those programs in your district, you end up getting a modest fee back. Your, your kids don't, don't have to pay to go to it. And you don't have to pay transportation to get your students who need a program that's in the collaborative to, to another, cause for example, sometimes we have to send them to Ash West because they have the program. Uh, we're the ones with room right now, so we're getting some of the programs, which is, which is good for the school district, good for the students. They can be, you know, accessing their education actually at home, in the home district, rather than going to Westminster or going to Ash West or other places that might be housing the program. So it's, it's really a win-win, uh, it's, it's nothing.
So you said it's free for, for Barry?
Yes.
Residents and?
It, well, it's for, for any district, any, for any, five times, yeah.
Anyone in the collective. Okay.
But it's housed in Barry, which is the central, so, you know, area of the, of the district, so that's, that's good news. We do have some students who are in Hubbardston at the collaborative programs, you know, that have those special education needs that are there.
And you said, um, that there's a, a fee involved, that?
They would, they would pay, they pay ten thousand dollars for each classroom space and.
Is it just for three spaces?
Yes, it'd be three spaces and that money obviously is utilized as a revenue, uh, in the district for, um, you know, support of special education programming and, and other needs in the district. It's not a ton of money admittedly, but.
It would offset any.
Yeah, it offsets extra custodial time and that sort of thing.
Exactly, yeah. Okay. Not particularly any downsides for the town?
Oh, well, none at all. In fact, this is sort of what Pete, your, your district works for, to try to get some of them at home.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And so, eh, any other questions, concerns?
Um, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, so we would grant approval to the, uh, lessee to, um, sublet the premises for special education programming that would provide opportunities for students in Barry, Harvick, Okem, New Braintree.
So I'd move to vote?
Yes, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, makes a vote. Uh, we can, would you just, uh, put a little note in writing to, um, the superintendent?
Yep.
Just letting her know that it, it's voted as required by the lease and that, um, thank them for, uh, working hard to provide access to special programming for our kids in district.
Yes.
I mean, it's, I know it doesn't seem like a big deal, but it is a big deal when you're, when you're six.
Mm.
And you have to get on the van and go to Westminster when you could go to Ruggles Lane.
Right.
Okay, um, correspondence, anything?
Oh, uh, well, we're on reports.
Oh, sure, go ahead, sorry.
No, that's all right. Um, last week, uh, virtually I joined in for a mock, um, advisory council meeting to get more information. Um, there is a mock center in Barry, but it, it's a state-led organization throughout the center of Massachusetts and my kids participate in some of the programs. Uh, so it was really just some of the things that are coming up, but also trying to connect more with the schools and with the different districts that they serve. Uh, primarily, you know, Fitchburg, Gardner and here, and, uh, connecting with them to find out, to make sure where it's state-led, they have state guidelines. But making sure those state guidelines line up with the districts for what they're expecting as kids go into schools. Uh, so that was one of the big things there and then, you know, obviously we approve different things for them throughout the year as they do things in the common, so.
Right. Great, so your kids enjoy them, do you feel from a, oh, great?
Oh, yeah. The, the book walks especially, they're doing, uh, knuckle bones this week.
Okay, okay, great.
Yeah, so one of the big things for them is trying to, to get the schools more involved.
Mm-hmm.
And make sure they're all on the same page.
Great. Okay, so a fuel bid, we have a fuel bid before you, um, which is ninety cents after.
It's ninety-four cents.
Well, they only have one bidder, so it's, it's not gonna be a hard vote.
Right, well, there was, there was two bidders, only one of the bidders, um, bid for Barry though. Because we were, we were in a group bid with CMRPC.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, this was after the CMRPC went out for a second time for bids.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, they only got responses from RJ McDonald and then another, uh, business that d- didn't, doesn't serve Barry. So RJ McDonald's is our only option, a ninety-four cent markup above the New York Pier.
So that's the only bid we received, um, and Central Mass Regional Planning was the individual group that sought these bids.
Yes.
So we know that they followed procurement appropriately, okay?
Of course, yep.
So knowing that, um, uh.
Should we move to accept the bid from RJ McDonald?
Yeah. Yeah, uh, second? Any other questions, concerns that you have or?
Nope, I mean, we've had RJ McDonald for many years, so it's not gonna, nothing's really gonna change.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we did the vitulers per license already. Uh, we do have a great big packet of information from the savage road race thing that's July ninth. Oh, they didn't give us much time for this one, but they have.
They usually don't, but.
Well, well, they actually gave, um, I mean, their, their original thing was, you know, earlier in June and they had to go through all of the different things to.
Right.
To get through. I know I, I made copies of this huge packet, I know I did, yeah, there it is right here.
I think, yeah, there you go.
But everything seemed to be checked by police, by fire, by Board of Health, by.
Building inspector.
Building inspector. Uh, I know that these races have been, um, part and parcel of the, um, stone cow operation at least once in the summer.
Yeah.
Um. I don't have any questions. Uh, it, I mean, we have more information here than we usually have for any other project that goes on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and I, and I know that they, they have, when they say they have this for security, I, I live in the midst of the race. And I would tell you that, um, they have all sorts of, you know, medical people trying, driving around in four-wheelers. They do, um, an early run about the place, having people go through the process. And I, I guess the building inspector has probably looked at the, um, structures and so forth.
The obstacle.
So, um, and, and everything is, at least from my end of the race, uh, it's, it's always well managed. So I would have no, no questions, um, and the information that's been provided is pretty, pretty extensive.
Yeah, it looks like a, a really good event, well, well planned out.
Yeah, so, um, I have a motion, uh.
Yep, move to approve the special event for the savage race on July ninth?
Uh, I would second. No further questions or concerns? Um, move approval, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, looks like that's a go. And you would let them know?
Yep, yes, and you will let them know tomorrow.
Thank you, very good. Um, wage authorization, um, are we just concerned at this point when these two particular individuals? Gene Joel, uh, with a step increase of a thirty-seven dollars and thirty cents per hour and Kayla Phillips, a sixteen, uh, dollar and eight cents per hour?
So those are just step increases that are separate from the COLA, so we'll just have to do those separately really quick and then we can get into the COLA.
Okay, so we just need these step increases and then we have a raft of paper, correct?
Correct.
Uh, that we'll present and for approval. Okay, so, um, those are step increases that are earned by the number of years in work with the town of Barry. Uh, I think those are regulated by bylaw?
Uh, I don't think it's by bylaw, but we just have a comp.
Well, you have a compensation, oh, it's a compensation plan, okay, so these are, these are just meeting the requirements of the compensation plan.
Like a comp plan, yeah. Correct.
Okay, then, that being said, I guess it's, it's a vote, right?
Um, do we need to move?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, can we move for both these together?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would move to approve both step increases.
For Gene Joel and.
For Gene Joel and Kayla.
I would second that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's a vote. Um, the other COLAs, um, could you sh- give us the big chunk of paper?
It's right in front of you. This is the list of COLAs, it's, it's a, looks like a relatively short list. The only ones that I received that are not listed in that packet is the, um, Fire Department, which is right here. But I've all cross-checked.
Okay.
Um, and worked with the fire chief to make sure that these are all correct, so you guys can just take a peruse of those and that.
So, and so your, these wage authorizations that are before you are wage authorizations that have been reviewed and examined for accuracy by, okay, our administrative assistant. Um, those are presented in, for the, for the record, please. And you can see we start at, at the town administrator's office and go through the various departments in the community. Um, library. Uh, okay, for council on aging, fire department, okay, we just, we know that we have, um, for Joe Brown and for Chief Suborn in there, those are not real numbers at this point, but what we have on record at this time, because we still need to finalize contracts there.
Yeah, and so, um.
Cause the sergeant will become a lieutenant and blah, blah, blah.
Right, the staff sergeant, we just kept it in line with as if he were just to continue within the union contract at his current rank. So that's why we kept, that, that's where his hourly wage comes from and then the chief, his, um, salary is level funded from the previous.
Could, could I just recommend, uh, those two, as, as part of the record, that those two salaries be highlighted either by asterisk? That these are to be determined?
Mm-hmm.
Because those really are not, um, going to be accurate. So those are to be determined for the record? Um, need a, a vote to approve the wage authorizations as presented?
I will move to approve the wage authorizations as presented for the fiscal year twenty-three.
Uh, would you accept a friendly amendment of adding the to be determined for the police department's two positions?
Yep, yeah, with the amendment to highlight the two police department positions for chief and for sergeant.
Okay, the, uh, I would second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have that approved and, um, so you have that for your records. Now, we have here sixty-seven, sixty-seven, um, individuals, um, who, um, have been, a wage authorization sheet has been prepared by the chief. Have you reviewed the free wage authorizations with the chief?
I've reviewed them myself separately from the chief and.
I mean, they're signed by the chief?
And they're signed by themselves.
And they're signed by you?
So, yes.
Okay, I would seek approval, uh, or, or a vote. I would seek approval, uh, or, or a, a vote, recommendation, whatever, to a motion to approve the wage authorization sheets presented and approved by the fire chief and also our town administrator and prepared for this meeting.
I'm still looking for
We don't have copies of that, that's what the chief delivered to me today, so I didn't have time to type them all out.
Now, as far as, we have nothing from the Department of Public Works. Does that mean they are automatically getting something or what do we, I mean, cause this is going to be a payroll problem? Because they're gonna, we're gonna have to do a retro.
So if they, if the DPW gets them to me before July first, then I can just process them and have the select board approve them at a later date as long as they're correct, which they are, you know. We, we figure out all those things ahead of time, uh, before it gets to you anyways. But, um, if they don't get them to me before July first, then we will run into a retro situation.
Okay, so
Because I don't know, you know, they, they're union people, so they don't just get a blanket COLA. They might be two and a half percent, two percent, I'd have to review their contract, but
Well, what, what I would ask you to do is to, uh, in writing, uh, uh, nudge the Department of Public Works to get that information to us, because we only have about, what, eleven days before we're gonna roll the payroll, so.
Right.
Well, I would move to approve the wage authorizations for the fire department.
As presented by the chief?
As presented by the chief and confirmed by Jessica.
I would second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Um, uh, just make sure Jessica gets that back, because I need to sign those.
Yeah, that, those are
Not when you put them in my file.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I think we're good there. Um, boards and committees, uh, we do have a recommendation that William O'Donnell uh be um ma- named to the nine eleven uh commission. Uh, he certainly has a stellar resume. I think he could uh do pretty much anything else he wanted in the community, quite frankly. Um, but at any rate, uh, knowing him myself personally, he's a, a very fine gentleman. And um I would, I would move approval, uh, that William O'Donnell be um an authorized member of the commission for the nine eleven, um
I'll second that.
Okay.
Um, and we did verify that there are several openings for him, right?
There are, yes, yes. Yes.
We did.
There's eight open, this would be the ninth, it will be complete.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Um, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, open space commission, I didn't quite understand what was going on with those two emails.
Right.
So, uh, does it appear that somebody wants off and somebody wants to stay on?
Yes, so Joy, Joy Lervie resigned and um
Jillian wants on.
Jillian sent an email to me requesting that she be appointed. I don't know how, uh, how much longer this committee is gonna be active, because we are in the final stages of approving the plan. But the committee can still work towards implementation of the plan.
Now, who will you be recommending her to, who's the chairman of that commission or the group?
Uh I don't know if they ever organized to get a chair. I thi- uh, Joy was really the leader of the, the group.
Okay, so, maybe their, maybe their work is nearly complete or something.
So It is very close to being complete.
Okay, so you'll, you will make sure that, um, if, if this is recommended by the board, that somehow Jillian knows what she's supposed to do and Joy is, receives a letter thanking, thanking her for her participation?
Yes.
Um
Um, well, look, I'll, I'll move to accept the resignation from Joy.
I will second that with our thanks.
Yep.
Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and um, would you
And then I'll, I'll move to um, appoint Jillian to that position.
I will second that.
Uh, before we do go forward with that, so essentially the open space in Recreation Committee you're saying is, is
Pretty much wrapped up.
Pretty much wrapped up. Um, the only thing I'd say on that is should we advertise the open spot before we award it?
Um, I think the fact that there was somebody who approached us with interest, I usually will go forward with whoever shows interest, because there's not, not a lot of people who do approach us. And especially I've, I don't know Jillian, um, but I know we see a lot of common faces who are always on the same boards and committees, so whenever I see a new person that kind of approach this, I typically just, you know, move them forward to, for approval. Um, but we are gonna be coming up on reappointments, so there's a chance that tho- those positions, when somebody says, you know, I'm not interested in reappointment, when we get to the annual appointment, that all of those get posted and advertised online, um, but sometimes with these ones that kind of pop up.
When is, when is the annual appointment?
That will be at, hopefully our next meeting, we'll have those.
Why don't we just leave it as an open position for now and then we'll advertise it and put her name in there immediately?
Yeah, we could totally do that.
And just see what happens, I think that's a good way to handle it, so
Yep, so we're gonna have all of the positions that are appointed advertised before our next meeting then?
Yes, eh, well, anybody, cause what we, what we do is we reach out to everybody who is up for reappointment and that's not every year. So some boards are three years, some boards are five years, some are annual. And anybody who gets back to us and says, yes, I'm interested in reappointment, we just move to the board for reappointment. And then anybody who says, no, I'm not interested in reappointment, we post those positions to, and we advertise those positions for the committee.
I just wonder if it'd be better to advertise anyone that's going up, even if we do expect the person to come back into the position?
Yeah.
Um, also it'd be good just to reexamine each one, make sure, you know, they still want it and that there are no, you know, conflicts in interest
Oh, yeah.
Or anything like that, that have cha- anything that's changed since the last appointment.
Yeah, they, yeah, they definitely have to ex, you know, we send out letters to everybody and they do have to respond to our letter by a certain time that they are interested in reemployment.
Okay.
And there's only one situation that I'm aware of right now that we, we will have to, um, revisit the members who are gonna be reappointed because of a conflict of interest.
Okay.
Um, and that, you know, that commission I will handle differently because of that issue, so.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just think it'd be good to advertise every position in case there are, you know, multiple people interested in a spot, we can get the best option.
Yeah.
I know, like you're saying, it's likely that most people, if we can get one person for one spot, we'll be happy.
Very happy.
But just, you know, to
No, I think that, you know, it gives other people the opportunity should they wanna serve. Okay, we have another resignation, uh, coming up, uh, for Gloria Casterata from Council on Aging.
Oh, yeah, so we need to, um, I think we need to vote no on my motion then?
Oh, okay.
Or vote as we
Well, you need to
You can vote to table
We did make a motion, or, I'd move to strike my motion.
Yep.
I'll second that. Okay, we need to m- um, accept the resignation with thanks for, to Gloria Casterata for her many years of service to the Council on Aging.
I would move to accept with a letter of thank you.
Second? Favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, um. We took, we took care of other under correspondence, so I think we're good.
I took, yeah, I did this motion.
Um, moving on to other, I have no other. John?
I have nothing else.
Jessica, okay, we have no other, old business?
Nothing.
Nothing tonight, okay, we do have executive session. Uh, the chief is here, so we'll be welcoming him a little bit later if we just can have a few moments uh to go through some specifics. May I make a motion to go into executive session?
I move to go into executive session uh to conduct strategy and preparations for negotiation with non-union personnel uh subject to Master General Law thirty A subsection twenty-one A.
Uh, I second that.
Dixon, yes?
Marshall, yes?